Our recent monsoon, I received an email from an extremely frustrated resident who has been experiencing drainage issues in the Woodland Heights area near his home. And I talked to our Public Works Director about it, who was very well aware of the issue. It's an older subdivision. The difficulty is that just simply putting in a larger culvert is not a solution for the overall drainage probably. It might solve that by that house, but it would increase speed and move it faster to the next place, which is going to also then experience it. But the reason it's on is because I want to ask the council for permission to have our engineer take a look at that area and see if there's work that can be done. Back in the 60s, stormwater management wasn't on the horizon for how they were dealing with these things. And there may be accommodations that can be made that could help that area. But if we don't look at it, we won't know. And this problem will continue for this area. And if any other development occurs, it will only get worse.
I'm drawing a blank. Where is Woodland Heights? I'm sorry.
Buck State.
Before you...
Oh, the last...
It's the last road on.
Okay.
Before you get to Eastman's.
Yep.
Does that drain onto Central Street?
Yes.
So Central Street is a state highway. Should they also be involved with this project?
Well, they'll look at theirs, but they won't look at ours. I think there are people here about this too.
Is the problem Woodland Heights up top or is it below in yours too?
Below.
Because that's the newest part of it, right? Isn't that the newest part of that subdivision? Or maybe it's not part of it?
It actually is both Woodland Heights and part of Buck State down below where Forest Hill is.
Right.
So the problems they're having at Woodland is also transferring down to the bottom of Forest Hill. This homeowner is having the exact same problem with all of her sub pumps just can't keep up. I mean, the water is just coming in faster than it had to allow. The stormwater drains are not working properly. Travis has some photos of the last, well, one of the last ones. I mean, the road was flooded. The retention pond that you have by the school, by the high school was flooded. Everything was coming across the road. And behind 10 Forest Hill, I mean, her backyard is flooded. And it still is. Yeah, it's frozen now.
It's not just the last storm. I mean, this has been happening for years, actually.
No, that was my question. I just wanted to make sure that this isn't just because of an abnormal rainfall this has been going on.
And Jay indicated that too and said that Dwayne, you know, it's not like that anybody's unaware of...
I'm sorry. What were you going to suggest? I'm sorry.
My suggestion was that we have Oliver take a look at the drainage in that area and see if there's what the recommendation would be to better manage. There's one detention pond. I'm not sure if there's not another area that needs some, another one to slow things down, you know, that we are...
That retention pond was built when the new schools were built, Middle School and Miles Lane, to solve the drainage problem there. I don't know if the original subdivision in Buck State's had a drainage plan.
It didn't.
It didn't. And that's...
I guess my question, is that, I mean, is that okay? We at least get started to do something. I don't know if we have an answer for you tonight that we can fix it, but I think what the town manager said, at least we can get the folks to look at it, see if there is something that we can do to get it fixed.
Yeah. Because I'm not, it wasn't that I thought that replacing that culvert and making it bigger was going to solve this problem, then I would have thought the town up on that. But that just exacerbates it further down the line. We need to look at the whole area.
Is there a timeline? Is there a timeline we can expect to, you know?
Well, I will, if the council allows me, I'll contact engineers tomorrow and within the next couple of weeks. Well, they will, it's going to have to be not 10 feet of snow, but you know, if it's a reasonable, if they can see where the water actually runs, they'll be able to.
Yeah.
Are you talking a culvert crosses Broadway further out?
It crosses right, actually, it's right behind my house. It's right on Forest Hill. And it did really, it's right at the bottom of the hill before it kind of flattens out and goes right up along Broadway.
Just beyond Bob Kamichael's house?
Before that.
Okay, okay.
She's right behind my parents.
Yes.
And I think there might be, there's something right there off my parents' front.
But there's nothing in front of that. So it just collects on my front yard and moves over. It doesn't go towards that drainage field.
Back years ago, when it was the Buck Farm up there, there was a spring up in the woods, not too far from your house. There was a big wooden tub, and that spring flowed year round. And that's all part of that whole drainage situation too. So that may have to be mentioned to an engineer.
And again, because once upon a time, it wasn't considered that in the future there were going to be all these other houses down here that were impacted.
There were dairy cows up there at the time.
Yeah, well, that's a different...
You don't want those back, do you?
Maybe, because it misses water.
I guess I can understand all the issues down at the bottom of the hill.
Yeah.
But I can't, is that the same issue we're having at the top?
No. I live on Woodland Heights. I mean, so you've got the Eastman, you've got the garage, you have Ergiduro, myself. Our water drains down about two houses, two houses past me.
Sure.
The houses on the other end of Woodland Heights drain in that same direction. All of our runoff comes to one place. It's right by where the new Smith house is. It collects in one storm drain.
So right in front of my in-laws?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it does. And then it goes...
No wonder their front lawn's so wet.
It goes under, but the problem is that three years ago, it flooded and came over the top of the road, and the road had to be fixed at that point.
Okay.
So they get all it meets in one spot on Woodland Heights.
Thank you.
So is it okay to get the...
Do we have, need a motion for that or just...
Well, I'm going to spend some money. It could cost... Well, that's the reason I'm asking, because there's no other, this is not a free...
I'll make a motion to allow the town manager to look into the drainage issues in both of those areas.
What I'll do is contact our engineers, have them take a look, give me a price, make sure that it's within reason, and then we'll move forward.
Do we have a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second to authorize the town manager to get quotes from an engineering company to look at the drainage issues at Woodland Heights. Anything further from the public?
Well, Woodland and Forest, right?
Woodland and Forest, okay.
Is it possible for somebody to just let us know what's happening? Because I know your next meeting is not for another month.
If you, my email address is on, if you, anyone who's interested, just send me an email and I'll make you a group and make sure that you're all notified that way of what we're doing. Because I may have to, depending on where you are, contact you for permission for the engineer to be in your property.
Thank you. Okay. Any further from the council? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes? Item D, Great Pond Mountain Conservative Trust, donation of Miles Lane's project. Susan.
Last year, Great Pond Mountain Conservation Trust came to the council to talk about a project at the Vernal Pool off Miles Lane. And there was a discussion of one platform out into a deep area of the pond. And that was since amended. What they came to the town for was permission to apply for a building permit because the town owns the property and they were going to do the work, which is to create an area on the, around that Vernal Pool that grade school students could use for, as part of their science classes at school. And they are, have gone through the process, gotten the permit, done that work and modified it so to address concerns about students being out over water that was three feet deep, et cetera, and brought them in. They're not out as far and they have, there were concerns about a student in a wheelchair or something being able to roll off. They've added curb type things to the edges of them. But the point is that once this project is finished, since it is on town property, they are just looking to turn over the constructed project to the town because they own the land. And I think there's somebody here from the land trust. Is there somebody, I should say, is there somebody here from the land trust? I thought there was. But, and there's a resolve later on, but there's a letter in the packet that is in regard to their desire to turn it over because they've done what they said they were going to do.
Okay. Any questions?
It's down in the resolve part of it.
Any questions? Yes, sir.
Will we be liable for any maintenance in future on those structures?
Yes.
All right. Item E, Heart and Souls Vision Statement, request for a resolve. Anybody here from the Heart and Souls?
A few left. I'm Nancy Minett, Bucksport resident, representing Bucksport Heart and Soul this evening. Thank you, Mayor Keen, councilors, and Town Manager Sue, for this opportunity to present a resolution to the Town Council for adoption of the Bucksport Community Heart and Souls Statements this evening. These community statements are the result of many hours of community development, engaging the community in conversations about what matters most to them in our town. These community statements are a summary of sentiments expressed through block parties, interviews, and many community events. These community statements were crafted at events attended by community members and heart and soul volunteers. The slideshow you are about to view illustrates each of these community heart and soul statements. Special thanks to Larry Wall and Hans Christels for providing the photos. We'll just take a couple minutes. Aaron's gonna, we're gonna go back and forth just reading the statements aloud. The longest one takes less than 40 seconds, so this will be... Bucksports Community Heart and Souls Statements. Community Spirit. We cherish our community that comes together through neighbors helping neighbors, volunteering... We cherish our community that comes together through neighbors helping neighbors, volunteering, and supporting local organizations and events, creating a sense of belonging which gives each of us an opportunity to make a difference.
We value a forward-thinking and transparent town government that responds to the needs of residents and local businesses, and maintains and supports community services and infrastructure, ensuring an accessible, safe, and secure environment.
Small Town Field. We treasure our friendly community with its safe, close-knit family feel and the generational continuity which keeps our proud history alive, creating a warm and welcoming atmosphere for residents and visitors alike.
We treasure a vibrant downtown with small businesses, festivals, parades, waterfront, and art-related opportunities which provide economic development and places for people to gather, promoting a rich, welcoming sense of community.
Recreation. We take pride in each of these things which enhance our health and well-being. The abundance of recreational opportunities for all ages which encourage exercise, deep conversations, and social interactions between friends, parents, children, and dog owners. Access to the magnificent waterfront walkway, the well-maintained trails, and the ponds, lakes, and woods.
We cherish the beauty of our rural environment which provides us access and a connection to our natural world. The Penobscot River, the jewel of our waterfront, and our maritime connection. Our ponds, lakes, woods, mountains, and farmlands, the privilege of our seasons, fresh air, and the stars at night. Our opportunities for civic and social organizations that encourage the traditions of boating, hunting, fishing, farming, and gardening.
Education. We value each of these things that contribute to a healthy, happy, and educated populace. An innovative school system which emphasizes varied educational and extracurricular opportunities for all learners. A class size conducive to knowing, caring about, and helping each other. A high graduation rate with graduates prepared to contribute to the community at large, and collaboration between school and community.
Healthy Community. We appreciate and value each of these things which promote an inclusive, vibrant community. Access to local choices for recreational, cultural, and social activities, and health, and other services. Access to housing that meets the needs of all ages and income levels, addressing current social, emotional, mental, and physical health challenges.
Local Economy. We value each of these things that contribute to a prosperous community by bringing people together and creating an inviting destination for our visitors. A strong local economy enhanced by our central location, affordable housing, diverse and creative businesses, available financing, and employment opportunities. Local eateries, movie theater, and cultural events.
Again, thank you for your consideration of this resolution. It is our hope that adoption of these statements will promote their use in the preparation of future policy and strategic plans of the town, as well as operational and investment decisions.
Any questions from the public on, on the presentation? From the council? Not, we'll go on to item F, Committee Assignments.
And that is relates to the fact that you have a draft of a core committee structure that, down under Ordinance Committee, is a request to put that on your next Ordinance Committee for the next meeting, but I've provided you with the draft, so you have a chance to look at it.
All right, we're going to go on to Agenda Items. Item A, to adopt or resolve R 2018-36 to commit sewer charges for the period of October 1st, 2017 to December 31st, 2017, in the amount of $192,431.34. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
Second. We have motion and second to approve the resolve. Anything further from the public? From the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Item B, to adopt or resolve R 2018-37 to accept the Miles Lane Vernal Pool project materials from the Great Pond Mountain Conservative Trust. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved. Second.
We have motion and second to approve the resolve. Anything further from the public? Council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Item C, to adopt or resolve R 2018-38 to set the 2018, 2019 budget review schedule. Susan.
It's that time again, per budget. And what I did was I followed the same practice that we did last year by keeping the meetings on Thursday nights, those on the schedule that have stars are council meeting nights, and then there are two additional night meetings. The one, the first one is March 22nd, and that's for the introduction of the budget and the discussion of the public works and help them sanitation budgets. And then the other one that is not, on a non-council night is the capital improvement program, the waterfront discussion, and parks and recreation. The, as I said, it's, it actually is one day, day off from last year, but it's the exact same format. And all of these will be televised. I open to the public certainly.
On the council meeting of the 29th, there are several of us that aren't going to be available for that meeting. And just throwing things forward, the next Ordinance Committee, what I'm going to, want to bring up and discuss is changing our meetings to the second and fourth and doing away with the last, where it doesn't do things, so I want to talk about our council rules. Is there any way we can, I know, I know several...
Well, there's, there's, there's two weeks between the 29th and the 12th, so that, that one, the 20th, you can move that...
If it's, if it's, you know, and again, I, I throw it to the rest of the council members, but even if it's a, if we moved it to a Wednesday, then, you know, I, I don't know what everybody else thinks of that.
Which it would, Wednesday, the 28th, work better than the 29th?
Are you, are you going either? You're going.
You've got the whole week. Okay, so we could do it...
The following week.
Well, what we could do is, we need to do this, is back it up so that the 15th and the 22nd, you could, you could do the first meeting on March 20, March 15th, and the second meeting on March 22nd instead of the 29th. If you want to, put a little more pressure on me, that's okay. The budget is actually due to you by the, by the 12th, so that...
Or we want to just move it forward a week from the 29th, so it's not the pressure and do it the first one in April, where you have a two-week thing there.
That's...
I, I, I think that would be, that way it gives you more time.
So that would be April 5th?
Yeah.
Change March 29th to April 5th?
Yep.
Okay.
But we have to, in order to change to second, fourth, Thursday of the month, we'd have to go have a...
We've got to change in the rules because it's part of our rules.
Oh yeah, you've got to change the rules.
But what I, what I'm getting at too is, you know, even though that today is a regularly scheduled council meeting, I don't know if we need to have a council meeting that night while I just went up there and did it, because I don't know how many of us are going to be here. So I think that's something we've got to agree to talk about at another point, but...
Well, there's an ordinance committee meeting that's been requested for February 6th, so that we can talk about that. And then you also have a goals and objectives session on the 1st, and you can talk about what you want your schedule to look like. Goals and objectives.
This, this originally came about because, oh geez, about 20 years ago, we only had meetings on the second Thursday of the month, and then we went to two meetings a month, and then it became the second and the last Thursday. Well, there's one or two months a year, there's five Thursdays in a month, so it kind of messed some people up, including me, when they show up, so, but anyway.
But as far as, as the budget schedule, I think if we move the 29th to the 5th and just cancel the 29th one, I would make a motion to approve the schedule, the change. Yes.
Okay, we have motion and second to accept the schedule for budget workshops with the amendment. Any questions from the public? This will be posted. Council?
Six o'clock start time?
On those meetings that aren't council nights, yes. I think that's how we've always done it.
That's correct, so then...
Okay.
So the 5th would still be the, the six o'clock, right?
All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Item D, to adopt or resolve R 2018-39 to adopt the Heart and Souls Value Statement.
Motion to approve.
We have motion and second to approve the resolve. Anything further from the public? From the council?
I'd just like to commend the work that the folks have done. I, you know, when you, when you talk about how we, these should be our guiding principles, I think we're all working towards those things, and this really accentuates what we should be doing, so I applaud you folks for doing what you did.
Is that on our website now? It isn't. Is that something we would like to have on our website? Because I think that basically explains the type of community we are, so...
Question? Are these going to become the, there was some discussion about using these as the value statements that we would post here in the municipal building? That's the idea. I thought these were really top shelf, what they came up with, based upon all the community...
We have motion and second.
Number of hours.
Anything further from the public? From the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Item Nine, Resignations, Appointments, Assignments, or Elections. I guess we're all set. Item 10, Approval of Quick Claim Deeds. No, nothing there. Item 11, Town Manager's Report. I think we have something.
Speaking of Heart and Soul, I had the pleasure of attending the January 24th Heart and Soul meeting to review hopes and concerns expressed by residents as part of the stories collected through this program. And I have to tell you that I am impressed with the amount of time that the Heart and Soul volunteers have spent on this, and with the thoughtful and valuable stories and feedback provided by the residents of the community. I received an appointment from Governor LePage to the Main Board of Environmental Protection recently. I had served on the board in the past from 2007 to 2015 and was asked to return to that board. The responsibilities of the board have been greatly reduced through legislative action and deal now primarily with licensing appeals of the DEP, major substantive rulemaking, and licensing of projects of statewide significance. It will require approximately the same amount of time commitment that was needed to be on the Municipal Review Committee Board. However, since there was a conflict of interest with that board, I will be resigning. The Environment and Natural Resources Committee yesterday approved the nomination from the governor, and the Senate this morning voted to confirm the nomination.
Congratulations.
Thank you. We will do the same as I have done with MRC board meetings, which are, have been traditionally Thursdays, that if I've been out on a Thursday, I've come in on Friday in order to make sure that I still kept my time commitment to the community. But, anyway, that's that news. I'd like to schedule a finance committee meeting prior to the next council for the purpose of considering bids for the installation of the automatic door openers to the town office out front. Money was appropriated for this two years ago, and those bids should be in prior to the next meeting. I would also like to include on that finance committee agenda a recommendation from the Recreation Committee to replace treadmills at the fitness facility at the Jewett School. The ones we have are in tough shape and are getting a lot of use, so that they're getting to be in tougher shape. And speaking of recreation, has anyone been to the skating rink? Wow. The surface is the best ice of the season, and great credit to Nick and all of his volunteers for keeping the surface clear of snow, and to everyone for staying off the rink when it is warmer to prevent damaging the ice. But it, today was like a plate glass window, it was pretty beautiful. I didn't go skating, I just went looking. I will be meeting with the project engineers in the near future to discuss the amount of the remaining contingency funds from our sewer treatment project, to the report from the work done this summer to inspect the interceptor line from Hannaford to plant, and options for use of the remaining money. So I'm hoping by the middle of February, we'll have an idea of where we can go with that. I have asked department heads for lists of their projects and priorities for the coming year, and we'll have those available at the February 1st meeting so that the council knows what work is already in progress for the departments. And I want to thank you, the Public Works Department, for modifying the railings at the front of the gazebo to having round tops that are easier to grip when climbing the steps. Although there is a handicapped accessible path and ramp to the gazebo, railings were also requested on the front of the gazebo to assist those walking up the steps. Railings had been installed, but they had flat tops which were not easy for people to grip. But Public Works modified those so that there is a round top to them with a spacer so that people can use them to more easily get up the steps.
Thank you. Any questions on any of those items? If not, we'll go on to item 12, set a public hearing, or hold a public hearing for the approval of any licenses or permits. Okay, we've got to open a public hearing to consider the abandonment of Second Street. Declare the public hearing open. Any comments?
I could just do a brief presentation on what's being considered here tonight, just in case anybody's curious. So this has to do with the official abandonment of a short section of Second Street. It's known as the Second Street Extension. And this map here shows the reason why we're looking at this. There's a sewer line that goes up, this is Franklin Street, and this is Second Street, and this is the short section we're talking about tonight, because a sewer line goes up this section and terminates at a manhole. That sewer line serves only the Knox View apartment building, and the sewer department asked a question recently, who, who owns that line, who's responsible for it, because it was backing up. When I looked into it, I couldn't find an answer because the status of this section of road there was really unclear. According to my research, I found that the road has not been maintained for at least 30 years, which by law makes it an abandoned road. This is what it looked like back in 1856. Second Street, again, this is Franklin here. Second Street used to go up and intersect with Middle Street, and it ordered the property of the State Conference Seminary. In 1941, the town actually discontinued a portion of both Second and Middle Street, and I've highlighted in orange to show you what was actually discontinued. But you see here, the section here was not discontinued, this was maintained as a public way. There were a couple of efforts in the record that showed that they, they started the discontinuous process for that section of Second Street, but it's never finished. And what we have left now is what's referred to as an unofficially abandoned portion of Second Street. So the question tonight for the council to decide is, do we want to determine that this is in fact an abandoned portion of Second Street? The reason why it's important... The reason why it's important not only has to do with the sewer line, but also has to do with the property make out here. This, again, this is Franklin Street. I'm probably blocking some people's ways here, I'm sorry. There's a house here that is actually using the section of Second Street we're talking about as their driveway. Because it's been abandoned by law, ownership of that land is split down the middle, half goes to the owner on the right and left, and half goes to the owner on the right. So that's happened. The issue is that the driveway actually is probably more on the right side than a lot to the left, but my understanding is after the discussion we had at a prior meeting, the two owners have come to an understanding about ownership of this property and access, continued access. I think it's going to be assured that this owner of this house will continue to have access and full use of this driveway after all said and done. So the law requires you hold a public hearing, take public comment, and then there's a document that's prepared, the council acts on that. If they approve the abandonment, that's recorded, the registered deeds, and it becomes official. It's an official determination of the presumption of abandonment by law.
Now, do the property owners have to give the sewage treatment company an easement on that property?
That's in the abandonment document that you have to be acting on. There's a provision that specifically preserves the utility easement for the town.
Neil's show?
No, as I said, there's a document that you have for you to act on and sign if you approve the presumption of abandonment.
This is a public hearing. Any comments from the public? Can you come up?
Just a question. Where would we have a right of way up through there? And that road was tied at one time. Do we have to dig that up to maintain that sewer line? Do we have to re-tie that?
I think the answer to that question is, I think the town would be obligated to restore the conditions of the property as they were before we excavated.
They would have to re-tie that.
Yes, sir.
All I'm looking for is a definition of abandoned. Does that mean that the town no longer can take that back over as a right of way again? Does abandonment mean that?
Yeah. A road is abandoned by law when it's not maintained for a period of at least 30 consecutive years. And I think that's the document, it's in the record. So if it's abandoned by law, ownership automatically goes half down the middle of the road. That's done by law. What we're doing tonight is making a determination that that's been done, and in the process, protecting our rights to maintain utilities in that strip of land.
So 10 years down the road, the town can't say, well, that was originally the right of way, it's been abandoned, but we're going to take it back over and use it as a right of way?
No, I don't believe that can happen.
Okay, that's all.
There's been an addition to the O'Blade Seminary back in that time that actually built over that original right of way that went up through there. You'd have to tear the building down to make the road back through there.
I have a soft reason for that.
Any other questions? I'm going to declare the public hearing closed then. Mr. Ali? All right. Declare the public hearing closed. How would the council like to proceed?
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion and second to approve the abandonment of Second Street Extension. All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Okay, we're going to go on to item 13, discussion items not on the agenda for the council or public. We'll open it up to the public first. Any discussion items from the public? Any discussion items from the council? Okay, we'll go on to item.
I have one thing I forgot to say, and that is that I have also asked our engineering company to give me a price for the drainage issue behind Main Street that involves our parking, the property that you acquired back there, but primarily all the water behind the old flower shop and book stacks and that, to look at that area for some possible resolution as well.
Any discussion items from the council?
No, this is just a, Rich is going to speak to that.
Okay. We're going to go on to item 14, and 14A is Economic Development Committee. Rich?
We have an Economic Development Committee meeting scheduled for February 6th to discuss some other items, but one thing that came up in discussion with the comprehensive plan is that our economic development strategy is outdated. It was last updated in 2007. We're now 11 years into it. In the past, from the records I can see, it looks like it's been either five or 10 years. So I'm going to bring it to the committee's attention, maybe form an ad hoc committee to handle that, since we're looking at restructuring all the committees anyway, and I just wanted to find out who wanted to do that, so.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I read you were good enough to email out to us that 2,000 and something document, 101 pages, and I mean, our comprehensive plan is a couple hundred pages long, so where I'm going with this is, back a year-plus ago, we did the ad hoc economic development that I chaired, and we put together a 10-page comprehensive, whole range of things that town manager all submitted your comments to. Whether that would be an acceptable document to insert just seems, when our comprehensive plan is only a couple, 200-plus pages long, put another 101-plus pages. Or, as an alternate, we, through the main economic development committee, we have the ELAN Group and ADAPT, and there's a lot of money being put forward for them to come up with that document. Could we, you know, wait until, I'm just throwing things out, we can discuss it further at the meeting, but wait till we receive that document and see if it's appropriate to use that, instead of having to craft something, throw out those two options, just to think about going forward.
All right, item B is ordinance committee, set meeting date to discuss committee structures and continue chapter five discussions. Peter?
Yeah, next town council meeting. One of the other things I'd like to add to that also to the ordinance is appendix B, council rules and meetings. If we could, if we talked about it at our February 1st rules, if we could bring that up in the ordinance to maybe make a change then, to look at that. With that being said, I think you also want to have a finance committee meeting, which we wanted to have.
I do need a finance committee. Finance committee meeting, if we had that at 6:30.
Okay.
We could have ordinance maybe at 5:30.
Yeah, because I think we could finish up with chapter five, half, half an hour, 45 minutes, you know, the other piece shouldn't take that long anyway, for the committee structures piece, so if we go 5:30 with the ordinance and then.
6:30 with.
Finance.
Finance. Sure.
Okay, we'll go on to item 50.
Have you started with the abandonment, like the control that we, is that what you're doing now?
Yes.
Signing it.
It's good. It's all right, it's just, just was asked to make sure it got signed.
All right, we'll go on to item 15. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
We have a motion and second for adjournment. All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes.